Can't have a simple discussion, I won't discuss them in here.
Mr. Mayor.
Item number three, Jessica.
Okay, so, um, I'm sorry, uh.
I do think Erica was trying to say something. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you said at the plate from the last council meeting that we had SOPs in City Hall and people choose not to follow them. To me, if you would like me to play that, I will. It's forty-three minutes and twenty seconds just to leave. My thing is, I, you're saying that you didn't say that, you did. That's all I have to say. Forty-three minutes and twenty seconds just to leave, for anybody that cares to. That's all I was gonna say.
Wait, Jessica.
Okay. So, um, obviously, I came to, first of all, I'm sorry to be late, I was at Johnson's and they ran a little quickie. They got a big filter that had a full house too on the pensions issue, but I understand that there's been a lot of, um, I guess, feelings about the SOP issue. I think I'd like to talk to everybody about that, but I know we have some business to get to as well. And, you know, maybe that's when we can talk a little bit afterwards about how can we get some of the business, if that's okay.
Sounds good to me, Justin. You, I had mentioned to you, you will put this out there for, can you speak to that when we start?
The first thing is actually another annexation issue.
Okay, so now these scissors are.
But I'll talk about the, I'll talk about the Land Swab, the Rogers, Cape Springs one, and absolutely.
This will be available.
This will be available, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I've been pushing Fabio on it, that's a work in progress, we're working on it, and so, and very well could be updated. And so we'll kind of continue to do that as we gather information and part of this at the end too is to say what else you want to see. So we can see what type of information we can actually, actually continue to get. Because I think all this is really good. And, but first of all, forgive me, I believe it was either the work session or the meeting. I had talked to you about the city, we're meeting, joining in with annexation to bring in the water tower property. If you recall, we have required a piece of property that is near, Daniel, can you show us where it is? Right there.
Yeah, I did it on the pond there.
And it's an acre to, to build the water tower project. I also spent a little time talking about, and there are a couple of property owners that want to come into the city of Cape Springs, but need to have adjacency with the water tower property, which is currently not in the city. And so, yes.
The water tower property is owned by the city?
It's owned by the city, but it's not inside the corporate city limits, if that makes, if that makes sense.
So in the county.
So it's, it's in the county, and so, last month, I talked to you all, the, the property owner's attorney contacted me and said, hey, would the city agree? Could we, if, if, if they do the work on getting the annexation together, could they bring the property into Cape Springs? If the city would want to bring the water tower property in. So, so T-Wall kind of said, hey, do you have any issues with that? Let me know, because the landowner is gonna, gonna go forward doing that. So that's what we have. I think it's, there's a petition that's in your packet that looks like that. And this is a petition to annex into, from the county, county property into the city. It has two exhibits. One is exhibit A1, which shows, I think, three parcels that have, that are owned by Lance and by Leslie. And then exhibit two, which is the city's parcel, excuse me, exhibit A2, which is the city's parcel, the water tank site. And, and then the legal descriptions that follow for those, for those particular properties. So, this is called, this is a voluntary annexation, this is where the property owner is asked to, to come in. And we kind of shorthand it, call it one hundred percent the annexation method. That's where one hundred percent of the property owner's petition to come in. So, and it's gone through, it has to go through a process where it goes through with you and the county. The county judge signs off on it, and then it comes to the city for us. And so I just wanted to give you all a, a heads up that this was coming forward. There will be an ordinance to, to bring this property in, but it's, it's a little, it's a little different. And you can see the judge's order at the very, at the very back of this, of this particular petition. But it has been approved by Judge Moore, and if you all have any questions about it, please let me know. But there will be, you know, several properties kind of coming into the corporate limits of Cape Springs in addition to the water tank, whatever.
So we have to annex our own property into our city?
Yeah, yeah. We can actually, we're, we're, we can actually own property outside the city. And often that's done for water sewer, because you bring it in for weather goods, so, yeah, this, this one is, is outside.
That's why it's listed here.
That's why it's listed there, yes. And it's, it's probably best for a whole number of reasons, and not the least of which is, if we had something happen out there, you want our law enforcement to be able to, to be there. So I would recommend that regardless, going forward, but this, so, so are there, are there any questions about this particular annexation?
I have questions about the property that the city owns.
Yes.
That one acre that was donated. I asked you about three weeks ago for the title paperwork, and I still don't have it. And I have to have that title work to know how much this piece of property is worth at the time of the donation.
I've got that in the queue.
Perfect.
When, when you sent me the email, I, it wasn't clear that it was water tank property, I thought it was the, the other property. So I hunted that down and sent it, and I don't know if I have that information, I have somebody looking through my files. Cassie Elliott may have that, but I'm hunting that down to get, to get over to you, yeah.
Because I'm kind of in the middle and I'm getting it breathed down, so I've gotta have that myself. Because it has to be on our asset list.
Yeah, we talked about that last week, and I'm, I'm currently trying to, trying to find that, I'll get that over to you. But I don't know, my problem is I don't think I have that in my, in my particular possession, I'm having to see who does have that, that valuation. Questions about this, for audit purposes, for our fixed asset list, have an evaluation of the donated piece of property. We had that for the fire station, and I just need to get that for the water tank site. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Last item is the Land Swab.
So on to Erica's question about, what we have up here is a presentation, I think it'll, right now we have a map, let me pull it up here a second. This is a, you all, at the last meeting, we talked about this annexation, this detachment and annexation procedure. There are questions, and we talked about that, it's pretty best if we pulled together some information in a document that we could send back to you at this meeting and talk about the process, talk about some specific questions that were asked about this, about this proposal, and started gathering that information. So we started pulling that together. And so this is a, a set of, you know, twenty-four slides or something like that, that has that information. It is ongoing, and so, you know, I'll, if y'all like tomorrow, I can send y'all copies. Probably will put a little qualifier on there that says, subject to change, because we're gathering this information and trying to do our best to provide it in, in an accurate way. But wanted to just kind of go through some slides here. Daniel has some maps that are not static, they're dynamic maps or Google Earth as well. And so he's got those prepared as well, and so we may jump out of this presentation to kind of look at maps here and there as well and kind of discuss some of those issues.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can I ask it from the mayor? This is what we, I said we're giving tonight, we were giving this at the last meeting. Because I went back and looked, and this was supposed to be what we were giving up, but it only goes to here? To Wallace Road?
That's not what we're giving in. That's, that's what we're bringing in. The line would go across that block for what we're giving out.
We didn't get this. Did you get this map? I never got this map. This came from City Rogers.
Which one?
This one.
At City Rogers.
Yes, you did not get that map.
Yeah, I think City of Rogers, there was a discrepancy.
I can, and I can explain, because it's a little confusing, because there's two different processes going on. One that's in Cape Springs and one that's in Rogers, and our ordinances don't look alike. And let, let me, let me explain that, because, and I, you know, I'll get in here and do that, because we're not passing the same ordinance. So that's gonna come up here in a couple of slides, is that okay? I'll make sure we, we touch on it. So, first things first, I wanted to give you all just a, a brief overview of why we are here. I first started getting wind of this in February. The property owners in the City of Rogers contacted the mayor and said they wanted to talk about this proposal. And so we set up a meeting on, and I believe, I'll check back on my calendar, it was February twentieth. At City of Rogers, Mayor Daniel, myself, David, Jeff, from the city went. There were representatives from Rogers Water Utilities Commission, the Water Sewer Commission, and from the City of Rogers. Their city attorney was there as well, and the attorney for the Water Sewer Commission.
Question.
Yes.
So this was initiated by property owners?
Yes.
And the city?
Property, property owners who their attorney had contacted the mayor and had discussions about bringing the property and I think there was also some county properties into the city of Cape Springs. And wanted to know whether the city would be interested in a detachment and annexation process with Rogers. So mayor called me, we had a couple of discussions about it, talked about what that process looks like. And then we got an invitation from Rogers to come to that February twentieth meeting. So we went to, we, we all went to Rogers and had, had a good meeting for a couple hours with, with the Rogers officials. What they proposed was a process where both cities go through a, what's called a detachment and annexation. And I, I, I put a couple of documents in front of you, just in case it would be helpful. One of them is a copy of that particular law. It seems to have, there, that fourteen forty twenty-one oh one. And that's the law, you can look at it, it's a little cryptic when you read it, and not, when you think that's something you have to read through a, a couple of different times. But it has the process on how you detach and annex property from one municipality to another municipality. So this only concerns property that's in municipalities, not, this doesn't concern county properties, only properties that are in municipalities. We're somewhat familiar with this, because we've gone through this before. Counting back about ten years forward, we've probably gone through it four or five times, where Springdale or Bentonville has asked us to release or detach property, right? You probably remember one.
Down on Wagon Wheel.
Wagon Wheel is, is, is one of those. The Simpson property is another. A, a big one was all that property around Brown Road, there, that whole, I forgot.
Wagon Wheel and that valley.
Right. That was all done through a big detachment and annexation between Springdale, Lowell, and Cape Springs. And that's where Cape Springs got that property from. So this, this has happened before. And it's usually happened in that way, where one city says, hey, can we meet and talk about this, it makes more sense. And going back to the big one that I was talking about, Wagon Wheel, Brown, and all that, that was really based off of what services each city could provide. And there was a quadrant that said, Cape can provide these services easier than Springdale can, or run Lowell, and then same for Lowell, same for Springdale. And that's kind of the way that it was divided up, because we had water services, we have fire protection and, and police protection. They were able to better hit some areas than what Springdale was able to do, and vice versa with all the others. So that's how that would work through. So this is that same process. The only difference in, in our process is we're both doing one. Where in the example of the Wagon Wheel, Mike, that you just mentioned, that was property that Springdale asked to detach from us, because we couldn't serve it, we couldn't bring utilities over there. And we, we agreed to it and said, we'll release it, and they, and, and through that process, they annexed that property into their city. The difference here is that Springdale, I mean, Rogers wished to annex some of our properties that we have difficulty serving, in which are kind of in the middle, surrounded by Rogers' properties, that we'll, we'll see here in a minute. And they knew that we have been trying for twenty years to reconnect the city, and I'm, I'm gonna get to that point. And so they put forward this proposal, and we have, we had some discussion about that, and sort of arrived at this, at this process. We here adopted an ordinance in March of twenty twenty-six that sort of started this whole process off, where Cape Springs said, hey, Rogers, we would like to annex this piece of property, okay? And that property that we are seeking to annex was that property that's west of one twelve and that little sliver along Wallace, which is really a very small, very small portion. What they sought to annex were various properties east of that that are kind of segmented. And there's a map that, that you all were seeing, Mike, you may have held it up, that has properties one, two, three, four, five. There are various parts of properties that are, yes, that one. Yeah, that are, that Rogers adopted on that same night, seeking to detach from Cape Springs and annex into Cape, into Rogers. So we have two ordinances happening at the same time, and the idea was, we would operate this in the same way, and we work together good day. And it's dead forward. The, the proposal, all this can change. All the dates we're throwing out here, I will tell you the ones that are hard fix, but as far as like, when this, when this process would end, if both cities approve, we had talked about it ending on May twenty-eighth. Now, it could be that it ends in June, because more time is needed or something of that nature, but that's what we talked about. That would give several months, a number of meetings, kind of talk these, these things, these things through and work through this process, so.
I'm sorry, I have one question. Ending as in it's a done deal?
Yes, yes.
And then goes to, like, ending as in it's a done deal, it goes before both councils?
Yes.
For a criminal?
That's, that's correct.
After public hearings, then?
That is, that is correct, yeah. And there's, I have a kind of a process slide coming up here.
Oh, sorry.
In, 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 in a second. Well, actually, it's right here. So this is just a, 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 a pretty basic plan that was, that was put forward based on requirements of the statute for simultaneous detachment and annexation. So the, the statute requires that you pass an ordinance that says, hey, Rogers, we want to detach this piece of property, you annex it into Cape Springs. Then we send that ordinance over to Rogers. Rogers holds a public hearing, and then in the regular meeting after that public hearing, they have to hold that public hearing within sixty days. But within a regular meeting after that, they can proceed towards either detaching the property, agreeing to it, or not. And the same thing goes with Rogers' ordinance. They send it over to us, we hold a public hearing, and we, at our next meeting, regular meeting, we would decide whether to allow the detachment or not. So the proposal was here, we passed our initial ordinances on March twenty-sixth. We would have public hearings on May fourteenth, we have moved that back, initially we thought that would be earlier. But as I will discuss, there is been a couple of legal description issues with the ordinance that Rogers passed. They don't change the map, it has to do with parcels, and I'll talk about that here in a second. But Rogers is working through those issues. One of the things that you do now in annexations that we used to not do before is that we have to coordinate and get a thumbs up from Arkansas GIS, which is a, a part of Arkansas Secretary of State. That is because the records that were done before that are pretty bad, and there are all kinds of discrepancies and errors. And Daniel was going through all the legal descriptions on the Roger side and happened to find a couple of discrepancies. And so those are getting cleaned up. So if you run it to GIS, they're gonna get a much better legal description, and we're not gonna have as many problems going forward. So in order to have, to provide that with more time, we have proposed pushing the public hearings back to May fourteenth at one of our work sessions.
Can I ask you a question about the hearings? I know that conjunction, like, we accept on the same nights, we do it for on the same days, but do the public hearings have to be held on the same day?
They do not, and we could hold them on different, different times. We need to get within that sixty-day period. But if we wanted to hold them on a different night, and we certainly could. And that's an option too, that, that, that we could, that we could decide to do if, if we need to. The, the only advanced warning I need on that is the publication for the public hearing has to go out, has to run the paper fifteen days prior. And we have to get it in the paper, because the paper only runs legal notifications now on the Sunday. So we have to time it, right? So if we wanted to change that, we probably in the next week or two, we need to probably make that decision to change that. Rogers has the ability, has a little more flexibility, because they meet every two weeks. So they have a lot more meetings in that time period, even though we have work sessions, they have regular meetings every two weeks. Along with that, I'm gonna talk about two other agreements. One is utilities agreement. There is a draft of, of that in your packet that I gave you, it is, it is a draft. It has my markers on it, I just kind of gave you the last version of where we're at, so you guys could get a, yeah, that's it right there, see. So you guys could get a, a sense of where things are with that agreement. But that is a, a proposed agreement between Rogers, Cape Springs, and the, the City of Rogers, City of Cape Springs, and the Rogers Water and Sewer Commission. And it's a very carefully drafted agreement, it's very important, it plays a very important role in this annexation. So we'll talk about that here in a minute. And then the other one is, is a proposed approval of a mutual aid agreement for fire. We do not currently have a mutual aid agreement with, between fire departments, very common thing, regardless of whether we're doing.
We do have mutual aid agreements.
I'm sorry?
We do have mutual aid agreements.
With Rogers? Well, we need to talk, because I was talking today with Rogers and they don't think they have one.
Yeah, I met with their chief last week, he said we were right in doing, but they used to have one, like, we just had fire last Sunday.
Okay. Well, I'm glad, I was gonna circle back to you, because the mayor told me to, to talk to the chief, but I was talking with Rogers and they, at least their city attorney wasn't aware, so we were gonna go forward, but we may, we may want to do a new one, regardless.
And I, I talked with the fire chief last month, I had a meeting with him and the operations chief.
Perfect.
We're making that.
So you can see how this information is still coming together, and this is, this is one of the later things we've been talking about over the last week or two. We didn't, we didn't talk about a mutual aid agreement necessarily in the February meeting, but we're talking about it now.
Well, just to really hammer that one home right there, so what that means effectively, this is since a break of Scissor Tail, just because I've had this question come up multiple times, that fire station that's closer to them on Pleasant Grove Road, that will be much responding to a fire. Is that a change?
So when you have a fire in Scissor Tail, you're gonna get Cape Springs, Rogers, Bentonville, and probably Lowell? In that particular box. So, yeah, you're gonna get Rogers Station Eight, you're gonna get Ladder Five, you're gonna get Engine Six from Rogers. Lowell Engine, or Bentonville Engine Six, Engine Seven, from Cape Springs, so you get a whole cavalry coming, so.
Gotcha. I just wanna hammer each of these concerns that I've heard as we, like, go past them.
So Cape doesn't have to show up first, like Rogers since?
No, no, Cape doesn't have to show up.
Okay, because that, because that was, yeah.
What's the SOP under? I mean, seriously, actually, it's a serious question. I mean, I see that it, 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 a little lighthearted, but seriously. So they get the call, I mean, certainly you're not gonna have six different fire departments all respond, because then.
If, if there's a structure fire, we have four departments. Anywhere in our box numbers, in Cape Springs, fire department.
Because that would pull away resources if there's another fire somewhere else, though.
But that's why we have, so all in Northwest or Benton County, we all have mutual aid agreements and all, like, we go to Hyphal, we go to Centerton.
Well, I understand that whole mutual aid agreement thing, but surely, if, you know, if somebody has a house fire, to send all the resources from all four of those without any coordination, that would be wasteful, wouldn't, would it not?
So there is coordination, so.
Yeah, that's, that's where it goes.
So like, Scissor Tail, you know, they're gonna send a couple engines of wire, which Rogers has eight stations. You know, Bentonville has seven, so they send a couple, so they still have multiple units. But as soon as we get under control, like, we had a fire on Ford Lane on Sunday, as soon as we have it under control, we start releasing units in Cape Springs tanks.
So everybody does respond and show up without?
Correct. So it's, it's a, it's been, sorry, creative and force, I mean, we're a bastard, I mean, this is how we've been doing it for years.
So the call just simultaneously hits all of those.
It goes to our dispatch, it automatically sends an active to Bentonville or Rogers, and within like seconds. So we had that fire on Ford Lane, Rogers was about two or three minutes behind us.
And they ended up showing up, but then you had it and they.
We got it under control, the fire was pretty much out, I believe, which Lowell was there, Hyphal and Rogers. So, you know, we have all, which, we'll probably be working on new mutual aid agreements, because I was talking to somebody else and they just have one, they didn't, they didn't, so. But yes, and like I said, I met with the Rogers chief, and he's all, he's not kept the services mutual aid with us during that.
It didn't, like, the agreement didn't expire and still active?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, this is all great information, because people have different perceptions, and obviously we've been getting a lot of email, think, people thinking, no, they're, they're, they're not gonna get any support from Roger's side, so that, like, you're busting that myth.
Yeah, and like the ladder truck, like, we'll either get a ladder from Lowell or Rogers or Bentonville like that, in St. Valerie Downe. Usually Bentonville will send us a ladder.
Yep.
So, and then over here, our Ford, Lowell will send us a ladder. We have these boxes built through our dispatch center, and that's how we dispatch what units go there and where.
JJ, do you mind speaking, since it was your question, like, what he said on the microphone, so that we can hear, basically, we're understanding?
Yeah, so, I mean.
To make sure it's right.
Yeah, there's, there's a mutual aid agreement. Scissor Tail residents who are worried that they're gonna lose access to the nearest fire station, don't need to worry about that. They're still gonna have access to the nearest fire station, as, along with the rest of the cavalry that'll be coming.
The only really thing that's gonna change is their ambulance service, which will be through Taft, which Taft is right here. And actually, Rogers' ambulance comes from Station Five down by the promenade, so, you know, so ambulance will be a little closer, but, okay.
Just a question. In regards to these, like, well. In regards to agreement that we have, is there a time limit? I, I think I saw five years, so what happened after five years?
For the mutual aid?
That's for sewage.
For all that sewage.
What a sort of different thing, but yeah, mutual aids usually are much longer, and they can have a term on them, but some, I've seen them pretty long. And usually they're re-upped. I, I don't know how long ours current one is, I can't even.
I know, I don't, I've been asking around about that, but like I said, I'm gonna get with, with, with Chief Hyde over Rogers and Chief Scanlon.
The reason, yeah, the reason I'm asking this is, I mean, these are valid question that some of the folks had, that they were sending email asking question. It's how does it, how does it affect your insurance rate? Because it is important to them, and I can see it. What, how does it, if it's temporary for five years, this might have a different effect on you, on the rate. And the same way with other things, so we're doing the predictive fire department.
We probably have a much longer term on it than, than five years. That'd be, that would be my, that'd be my proposal.
And we have to understand somehow how does it affect really, I mean, going through that, going from Rogers to Cape Springs for those folks, how does it affect their insurance rate, even knowing that they're gonna, Rogers gonna respond to the fire if it's there? This is a really good question.
Good question, yeah. So does the mutual aid agreement, I mean, because if, if, because I know Cape Springs has a different fire rating than Rogers, does that mutual aid agreement, does that head off the concerns about an increase for homeowners insurance for those homeowners?
I'll have to call, I'll have to contact ISO on that, because a lot of that stuff is going on insurance, is going back to hydrants and locations of fire stations. So if you're like within three, three miles, like, my insurance judging me by miles from a hydrant or fire station, not just up by ISO, so it all varies on some of that stuff.
So it's a good thing to find out, because that's some of the question that we've been getting, and I really think this is a valid question. I mean, I consider we need to be able to answer this question.
One of the most, I think it's probably the most common question that we've gotten, or the one that's repeated the most, and. It's one of the most, I think it's probably the most common question that we've gotten, or the one that's repeated the most, and, um, that, that, you know, and it's, and it's, I don't think it's just folks made, that, that, these are folks who I think are talking to their insurance agents and their insurance agents. And I'm getting confirmation from Scissor Tail residents as I'm saying this, uh, but, I mean, they're talking to their insurance agents, their insurance agents are telling them this may change things.
Yeah, I'll get with ISO. I'll just do some double checking, um, tomorrow. I do know, uh, like, in the next couple of years, we, we have software, we log all our trains, and we'll have this ladder truck, and we have Rogers Station A, you know, Springville. And so we're gonna be doing an ISO adjustment hopefully in the next year or two. I'm gonna try to go for it also.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the mutual aid, as this discussed recently, over the last couple of weeks, and, um, the, the plan is to get a draft. Um, and, uh, fairly soon, get it to, to you all at a, at a next work session, be able for the chiefs to, uh, uh, to work through it. And, um, so we have plenty of time to, to, to do all that, but that would, you know, planning for that to be adopted in May, uh, as well, uh, so.
Uh, and I, and we're moving, I promise I'm moving on the next thing, but on this, on the, the agreement for the water and the sewer, this is five years continued service. This is very, yeah, can you, yeah, can you, can you, can you explain that?
I have that coming up. Uh, yeah, we have, uh, we have all that part, uh, uh, coming up, uh, here in some slides, specifically on the agreement, because that's, this, uh, the utilities agreement is a very important agreement. Okay, so this part, I think we can go a little bit faster, but I just wanted to get it down, the, um, uh, the, the history. Uh, one thing, can you go back a little slide? This is a, uh, a, a map that I found in my file from two thousand eight from regional planning, and I have the pointer out because you can't see, it's easier to see it when it's not, uh, uh, on a, on a projector. Uh, but that's, you know, the Cave Springs border, and also the Cave Springs border up here. These parts, back in that day, these parts was county. Um, but this was, this is a, a fairly, uh, uh, close map to what looked like, um, in nineteen ninety-nine. When, uh, Act, what we call Act seven seven nine was passed, uh, by the state legislature, and it allowed for a property owner to detach, uh, to, to detach from one city on, on, on their decision. To detach from a city and go into, and take their property into another city, a neighboring city. And that was passed, um, I, uh, from all accounts that I've heard over the years, um, uh, the, uh, the intent was to solve a problem in South Arkansas between this, uh, uh, property between two cities. Um, and, uh, the, the problem was up here, so many cities touch, and so it, it had a much bigger effect up in Northwest Arkansas than it ever did in some other parts of the state. Um, but that was passed, and shortly thereafter, uh, a property owner, uh, uh, petitioned to deannex a substantial portion of property from Cave Springs into, uh, uh, into Rogers. Um, that property was, um, more or less what you see here, and, and, so, I mean, we're talking a very substantial piece of property. And it cut the city into, we have the northern half, we have the southern half, everybody knows that. Um, I have done some looking. I have found a couple cities, uh, that have like, uh, some property that's, that's not contiguous, but it's very small. And there must have been some quirky reason for it. I can't quite figure out yet. Like, Fayetteville has Lake Wilson, which is like five miles outside the city. Um, and so it's not connected to the city. Um, but as far as like having a substantial population base in two different parts like that, um, I have yet to find. Um, so it is kind of a rare thing. Of course, what happened after that, um, was something you may or may not know. There was a ca- uh, uh, a case that went up to the Arkansas Supreme Court, Cave, Cave Springs filed suit, um, to prevent that annexation from happening. Um, that lawsuit, um, let's see, right there, I took that from the old West Law Book. Um, but, uh, Cave Springs lost that, that lawsuit in two thousand and one, and the, uh, you know, this was obviously the result, is that we haven't ever had in, in, in a bottom half. Um, I started doing work for the city, uh, in two thousand and four, two thousand and five range, and, um, and I can tell you from the two things that I've heard most about over that long period of time. And see, and they're making the same, um, and Mark, um, the two consistent things that for twenty years have been, uh, at the core of, of the city's challenges is NACA. Sewer and, um, uh, connecting the, reconnecting the southern and, and the northern halves of the city. Um, ever since this started, uh, this happened, this sent off kind of a wave of Act seven seven nine, the annexations, that impacted the northern and southern half of your city, where you've lost additional properties. Um, to Bentonville, to Rogers, um, that area all throughout and here, um, that started in, I mean, we had it in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, two thousand and six. There's probably been as many, uh, Act seven seven nine requests as there have been years since that time. And it's gotten better because, uh, uh, because of sewer. Uh, you didn't have access to sewer, you didn't have sewer plant in, uh, uh, back in those early years, but you do now. Um, but services were the, were the problem, and that's what Act seven seven nine is based on. Can you provide services? If you can't provide services, you can't hold on to the property. That's, that's the whole basis for it. So Cave Springs was kinda getting eaten away. And, um, so... Uh, I think I covered most of this. I'm gonna bring you up to, uh, two thousand and seventeen, when, uh, there was a lot of annexation activity. By city, starting with city Rogers and city of Bentonville, and then, and then this. And what happened was Rogers had a plan to go west all along, uh, uh, a fairly wide corridor along Pleasant Grove Road. And they wanted to go all the way to the airport. And their plan was to annex that property and have a long corridor to the airport, and do a commercial corridor in development, with also residential component to that. And, um, so it would be an election. They proposed it, um, and, uh, that's, uh, raised a considerable amount of interest, uh, all in that area and in all the cities. Um, a number of, of, uh, people were on the council at that time, and they remember all this. Um, they, uh, they had a fair, they had a very big, uh, uh, I'll, I'll come back to this, but had, had a very big kind of territories that were involved. Uh, that were, uh, uh, all kind of within our, uh, western area of, of, of the city. Um, what ended up happening was the city of Bentonville, um, uh, had, uh, a number of property owners petition, kind of form a daisy chain line. And petitioned to bring their properties in before the election happened, and, uh, really kind of messed up the Rogers election. Because what happened was Rogers, it's kind of hard to see here, apologize again, but can, can you see this arm of purple that comes down?
Yes.
That didn't exist between, before two thousand and, um, seventeen. All of these chained up in a whole series of long annexations and annexed into Rogers in order to block that, that, that's simply annexed into Bentonville. In order to block the Rogers annexation. And so when that happened, that messed up the legal description for the election for Rogers, and there was a lawsuit. And that lawsuit, uh, fell to Bentonville's favor, um, and, uh, that stopped the, uh, the westward annexation, uh, uh, to the airport. Let's see, uh, the, um, so, uh, around that time, a number of the properties in the area that we're talking about right now annexed into, um, uh, annexed into Rogers and developed. So this is sort of around the time that Scissor Tail, uh, developed, at the time Scissor Tail was developing, uh, there were meetings here with the city about whether they would come into Cave Springs, whether they'd come into Rogers, I believe. They, so they could correct me if they want, but, um, I recall at the time that the issue was availability of utilities. We weren't quite up there, uh, enough. And there may have been some other things too, I don't know, but that was the, in the meetings I was a part of back in that time, uh, that's what the discussions were based off of, because could we get utilities up there? At the time, we didn't have the plans that we have, uh, in, in the projects going on that we have now. Okay. So, uh, Mike, you, you were showing me that map earlier.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, so what we have is we have two different proposals, one from Rogers, where they want to deannex property, they want to detach property from Cave Springs and annex it into, um, uh, Rogers. The properties are listed as one, two, three, four, five, okay? Uh, these are, we, I, I've been referring to them as east properties, because they're out east of us, right here. Um, all this territory around here is Rogers, so you can see some of these are, um, extremely surrounded. Um, and, uh, these have always been a challenge for us to provide utilities to. We can. We'll have utilities, uh, uh, to, uh, a number of these, yes.
We just approved the rezoning on, uh, the far, that forty acres there.
Here?
To be developed.
Yes. To this part, we have, uh, cause this is Allen's Mill, right here, right?
Yeah.
So this forty acres is, um, one that we can provide to, but that they have requested from us. Uh, their, uh, uh, their reason is, uh, they wanna be able to do improvements to roads and infrastructure that they can't do right now because of the way that these boundaries go. Where you're in Rogers and Cave, and Rogers and Cave, and Rogers and Cave.
I'm really surprised they didn't ask for Allen's Mill.
Yeah, well, uh, the, it's Traskman's Road, right?
Yes.
There, that's right there, that they have, um, some future plans for working on for, for improvement, but...
They wanna extend it to wagon wheels, so it goes all the way through from not paper to wagon wheel without having to do all the turns and go throughout the roads.
So, uh, and then you got a couple of these that are almost like kind of on planes, where they're just little, uh, uh, things where if they, uh, went into Rogers, Rogers has services to these areas, they can serve them. And, uh, it also makes for a clean water, where right now it's...
Part of the Pinnacle Golf Course.
Justin?
Yes?
I hopped on Facebook and, uh, Chief, can you, they say they can't hear. Is there anything you can do about that?
So my wife said the sound's come back on.
Has it?
It has. She said it was off for a while, but then it come back.
Okay, all right, I just thought, sorry, but it's back now.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, uh, so here you have, uh, that's, uh, just a, a, a zoom in of the maps that, of the territory that they, uh, that Rogers is seeking to detach from Cave Springs and bring into, uh, uh, bring into Rogers, okay?
So they're gonna get three, that little square, and four.
Yes, one, two, three, four, and that whole lot.
What's that blue line down the middle?
What's that?
That's our...
This? Oh, that's just the background. These are two maps.
Yeah, okay.
This map shows areas one and two, this one shows three, four, and five. And that's, I don't know if you see it, this is Highway one twelve.
Oh, yeah. That's Highway one twelve.
Yeah.
So they actually repeat this.
I can't, right, is it, is fatal friends, like?
Yes.
Where's there some?
That's the little upper right-hand side of two, where it extends further out.
Okay, so that, that part, okay, okay, now I got it.
They, they friends on the...
That's fatal friends, okay. I know those, yeah, that's a good marker for me.
This one, I recall, I have to go back and look, uh, but this one, we almost lost to a, I know, I think we lost and we got back. I can't remember. I had to go back.
The one we got back was on, on wagon, or, uh, rainbow.
Rainbow, okay, well, um, anyway, uh...
So we're, are, we're giving out the property that the mini storages are going.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Would that be over?
Right there.
That's the lower part of one.
Okay, the lower part of one.
Oh, is that one, yeah, okay, I was gonna say, this way, but, okay, that's, right.
And if you call, we don't have water there.
Yeah.
The only place I've ever seen them doing, Mark, you can see hydrants, where they set hydrants on the corners, and in a major fire situation, they can roll hoses across the road to Rogers hydrants on the other side.
And we do lose fatal friends, right?
Yes.
I love fatal friends.
I know, I do too.
I got friends, we got the, the storage, and then this is like Pinnacle Gardens, did you say that?
No, it goes around.
Oh, oh, okay, that's our Rogers. All right, I'm just, that's right, because it's, that's true.
Where the two is, I think we're giving up, up like four houses or something.
Yeah.
Is all that is. That goes out by where that old, uh... It curves around, goes up by that old church.
Do you guys wanna see a Google Earth stats? Would that help?
No, I, I know where it's at.
I know this area. I just had to reorient myself to that, right?
Mark, are you going to Rogers too, right?
Can we give it to Mark?
Every insurance is gonna be three thousand bucks less than we should.
So here's the, uh, uh, the challenges. We've talked about the difficulty and possibilities or inefficiencies of providing water or sewer utilities, confusing boundaries. Uh, stream improvement challenges, we've had this over the years, where you have some roads that go in and out of, uh, of Cave Springs and Rogers, which, uh, end up having kind of different cycles of improvements. Plus, uh, for law enforcement, I think it's always been sort of a tricky thing in that area, um, probably having to look exactly where you are to know whether you're inside Cave or inside Rogers. Uh, distance from our current fire and police departments, and, uh, this area has seen a lot of territory over the years lost to Act seven seven nine. Because of this, not being able to provide water in, in sewer, uh, up, up to those areas.
No, Act seven seven nine has changed now, right? You could create an island, you know, and do that.
So you raise a very good point, something I meant to mention. After Cave Springs was cut in half, uh, the legislature amended Act seven seven nine, the sponsor of the original act, actually. Said he didn't intend for a city to be cut in half, and it can no longer happen. So it happened to us, and then it didn't happen again. Uh, so now, when there's an Act seven seven nine request, it can't leave an island anymore. It has to be, still be contiguous property. Okay. So this is, this is the map that you all saw, uh, uh, before, uh, and it's attached to our ordinance, obviously has Scissor Tail and some of the other, uh, properties in here. This is, uh, Highway one twelve right here. This was a part of our ordinance, uh, that we adopted in March. And, uh, these are all, uh, properties, uh, west of one twelve, and, uh, obviously what this does is, um, if, if this property were to come to Cave Springs, it would reconnect with the northern property, which is here. So you'd have a connection kind of along the west. We could look at some better maps here, uh, that Daniel will have, uh, shortly. But this west property kind of allows that, that reconnection to occur. In the past, when we were looking at reconnection, um, it, the possibility was having to daisy chain a number of parcels, and it, I recall, it was like, I think we needed like seven to twelve parcels, depending on which ones, to all chain up. And there were several who were interested, but some who weren't, so, uh, there were several mayors who made runs at it, uh, uh, to, to reconnect, and, and it was never able to be done. Um, and, uh, so here we are. Some of the benefits are the reconnection of the, being able to connect the utilities to the northern half of the, of the city. We've lost some properties to Act seven seven nine, and the northern half of the property to Bentonville, uh, because of the inability to provide utilities. We have some currents and people who have made requests for utility services that are kind of waiting to see what, um, uh, what transpires. Uh, but, um, we have water service to the northern part of the city through access to the Bentonville line up on the northern part, um, but we do not have sewer, uh, there yet. And it makes it difficult when you're having to cross the territory that you can't serve. Um, so that has been a, um, a, a barrier, um, uh, all along. Um...
Water?
Water and sewer, but yeah, connecting the two, because of that, that span between the northern half and this, if you, you, it, it is expensive, and you usually repay that by having customers on there. If you have a big territory you can't serve, it makes it very expensive, um, to, to, to do so. Um, obviously, uh, uh, to prevent further loss of territory on the northern and southern portions of the, uh, uh, city, it's when it, within an area of planned growth. And what I mean by that is, um, the, the city's, uh, uh, infrastructure, uh, attention has been moving up that way for, for some time now. You have projects that are bringing infrastructure up that way currently, um, and, uh, so that's what Daniel's gonna talk about here in a minute. Um, and then it being between the southern and northern half, it actually is centrally located, uh, to the city. Like other annexations, which tend to be on the outskirts of the city, this one has the odd, uh, unique, uh, quality of being in the center of, uh, of the north and south of the city. Uh, some of the challenges, uh, uh, is, uh, the service, I mean, obviously... Some of the challenges is the service, I mean, obviously, the challenges once you take on the property is bringing the services to, to the property. And this is getting into some of the meat of what we need to talk about. Those challenges have changed over the years from two thousand seventeen to now. Because now, at some point later this year, you're gonna have water service within one half mile from Haxton to Pleasant Grove Grove. That's due to a current project that we are building right now, and that Daniel will talk and show you a little more on the, on the map. And he will also show you with some of the annexation development and development proposals that are coming through, plus plans that are currently in process right now, that there is sewer service going up that way as well, from two different sides. Okay? Dan, you wanna jump in and show those now?
Scroll back out of this a little bit and get everybody oriented. As we've been talking about those two land masses, again, I'll try to start from a very high level view here, if you can get it worked in a little bit better. Everything you see outlined in blue there is Cave Springs, Cave Springs, and Littles. What I'm going to do is, let's see here, trying to get you. I don't have the right items to put here. Let's talk about the annexation areas. There, when I turn those on and off, so the area in the yellow, that's what we're talking about, we've got many Cave Springs, everything in the red here. And then these two locations go into Rogers, is what we're talking about.
I have a question.
Yes?
On the green map to the board that we're taking in.
Uh huh.
You have like a, a sip, that is seven, up there, or upside down, down to the right, to the top, right?
Up here?
Yeah.
No? Right there, right there. Is that along Highway one twelve also?
One twelve is right there.
Okay.
All right.
And the sip from property is north of there, correct? Yes. Right in there.
That's the one that we're annexing. There's another section property within this.
Yes.
So now, let's talk a little bit about. Your sewer lines. And let's, let's go back to the south part of town. This location right here, the golf course sits in this location here. This is the new pump station that's currently under construction. The force lane, it goes all the way up to two sixty-four, goes back to a point, trying to call the name wrong right there.
Burnock.
Burnock, where it turns to gravity. And from this point on, it flows gravity all the way down, up where we tie in the Bentonville sewer line that goes to Nacca. That's under construction now. So during the planning of this project, sewer project, I'm gonna show you sewer basins that, that we had designed based on that. So you see this light area right here, and this area right here, and again, on the southern side of two sixty-four, which is not relevant to what we're talking about today. But this area right here was taken into account, we took this area into account for future build out, for the paths through the line. And we took all of this into account for the future for paths through the line.
Are you pushing? What, I mean, what distance are we talking about? When you say paths through around, are you talking about how many miles or how many?
From, we're talking about how it's.
From where we have right now, or, for example, so what line do you take and get to?
And.
I'm just trying to figure out, put a number in it.
Okay.
As far as dollar wise, what we're talking about, because it looks really good on a map, I just wanna make sure we really understand what.
All right, let's talk about this area that we were talking about, bringing in the case springs. You have a ridge, it comes down roughly through this location right here. So the sewer has two opportunities. Opportunity number one, you can go to the south, across Pace Lane here, and tie in to the new Osage Meadows that's currently, has been approved, is currently under review at this time. So that project is moving forward. There'll be another pump station here, we're installing the force lane for that at this time. We have a cost share agreement in place with the developer for this property to be developed, so that is moving forward. Where the sewer really wants to go is over on the western basin. And this red line delineates, based on readily available data, where a gravity line can go from the Nacca line all the way to the north, to the northern extents, or just southern extents of this, this area here. That line, if I can get my mouse to operate correctly. I need parcels on it. Operate this correctly. So maybe the distance on this.
I thought we were taking water and sewer up the road that the school bus was used off of Pace Lane.
Well, we're taking water up there, we'll talk about that here in just a moment. So you're wanting to look for a distance?
I'm just trying to get an idea of what we're talking about, are we, are we gonna be able to do it, or not, or roughly?
Am I able to give it, my, my connection's bad right now, so.
I think it's a good idea to have a number for next, maybe, to make meaning to know that all this connection that we're gonna do, how far it is, and what's roughly what the idea is of cost. And also the cost sharing part that is discussed, do you remember what number was that?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Do you, Mr. Mike?
I've got an idea in the ballpark, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, it's been a long time.
That's all I can, I'm trying to see where I'm going with that, I wanna see what's gonna cost us. Are we gonna take those folks and be able to provide them? Do you want, do we have financial resources to do that or not?
Well, the good news is, and I don't want, I bet all the company here, but the good news is, there is, there are several property owners looking to develop in this area that have gotten together. I think it's only worth about three hundred acres at this point, is that sound about right now? And they're, they're already working with engineers, but waiting on the Nacca line to be finished.
And it's unincorporated now?
That's correct.
That part, it's outside of the.
That's correct.
Currently, it's unincorporated.
Yeah.
This, this can potentially allow for that to be brought in.
Right.
They've been, they've been actively pursuing neighbors, trying to find a way to be brought in.
Well, that was part of what we were talking about annexing last year, didn't happen.
So likely, this is, this could be a partnership with cost share, development, cost shares, to bring it all the way up to this location.
Right, yeah. So this, maybe not, we need to, we can discuss it some.
Yes.
So.
I have it down so we can get some information on that thing.
And let me, I don't know what's going on, I think my internet connection is.
The internet is, is not working here tonight very well.
And we can look up real easily how much the agreement was, because we did a fixed agreement. So if things changes, our part did on the Osage Meadow.
Are we going to just move on through, or are we going to have to do it? Because there's a lot of construction, we have no damn bad east course.
We're doing sewer development, which I am doing. Yeah, I'm doing it on the second, I was with several years. The developers would have cost share, and it would take this, this property.
Right.
And it would come down from there. There would be gravity flow all the way.
A couple of things to point out too, as we were doing the design for Nacca, the gravity line, we talked about the capacity and then, and what that would look like, and what that growth could look like in the future. The vision from the water and sewer committee at the time, wanted to go ahead and upsize that line even more than we were looking at based on the spacing due to this potential. So that vision is, is coming to fruition right now. Not only that, we have shown in blue here, I'm gonna turn my sewer line off. Not only that, if you look at Pace Lane in this location, so this light blue line is a twelve inch line that we just installed, that was completed in the last year. You'll remember, going from Pace Lane to the north on Roberts, we did this extension, which we were talking about an eight inch line, and then changed that to a twelve inch line.
Yeah.
So that's closing that gap, where our gap now is, we're almost to Rogers. And we were talking about that emergency connection. So the good news is, some of the planning that's taken place over the last four or five years is positioning the city very well to take this in. Now, they currently have, and part of the reason that Rogers is, is talking about giving up this section is because this is all gravity fair, gravity traditional sewer that goes to a pump station that's located right, I believe it's in this area. And then it's pumped up over a ridge, back over along Pleasant Grove Grove. This pump station, we can take that and go to either basin that we have. And again, I told you earlier that it wants to go to the west basin, because it can gravity flood. Up one time, gravity flooded, and we pay energy costs once. Goes to the east basin, we'll have to pump it a second time, which is long-term additional cost. But again, with the interest that we have right now on the development side, I think the opportunity for a minimal cost share investment is going to be presented to the city in two different forms, if you, based on what we're hearing. I think I've covered most of that. Any other questions on the utilities and how this sits?
Well, I don't know if you can answer this or not. I don't know about the others, but I got about seven or eight emails from, from Scissor Tail. And one of the questions they wanna know, they brought up was utility rate increase.
I can talk about that.
Okay.
And that was, that was kind of my question too, is, was the rates and how the, the provision, sure agreement, how's that?
So we get back into the presentation here, and we can hop back to the map at any time. So, let's talk about the agreement. This is still in draft form, but this is kind of where we've worked, to the point we've worked so far, there will be more, more revisions. But this agreement allows, even though the property, if it were to come into Cave Springs, it allows for water service from Rogers to continue for five years, and sewer service for seven years. The, the question that you just mentioned, JJ, about water rates, is that those areas would continue to be charged on an in-city basis instead of an out-of-city basis.
So they wouldn't be paying the Cave Springs rate or the out-of-city?
That's right.
Right, because that's, those are two of the main things I've heard, is people believe they're either gonna end up paying the Cave Springs rate immediately, or they're gonna be pushing to pay the out-of.
That's right. So for this, for this period, they would, they would receive in-city rate of water in their sewer, is based on their, their water, I believe. And so, that would, they would continue to, to pay the same rate for water and sewer that they pay now.
For those years.
For those years. And, and that gives also us some time for some planning. And working on how that would, you know, eventually come into the Cave Springs system and how that would work out.
And then they'd be paying the Cave Springs rate after.
Yes, whatever, whatever that rate structure is at that time. And of course, we're likely to go through some changes on, on our rate structures with what we're going through on, with the, with the Nacca line as well. So, so that's what the agreement provides. It also provides for an emergency water connection that Daniel's talked about with Rogers. Both cities thought that that was a, a good idea regardless, I think based on what happened just last week. Having a good, quick emergency connection saved the city a lot of, of, of trouble. And so having, that would mean that we would have a connection with Bentonville, Rogers, and Springville for, for emergency water.
And Justin, I guess, I guess the question is, is the comfort level for those folks that we're gonna attach to Cave Springs in five years or seven years? Are they have a good comfort level that the city of Cave Springs is gonna be able to take care of them or not? Because based on what, you know, we're putting it on, five years, and after that, what? I mean, is, that's, I'm not saying that they're not, we're not going, but I'm just saying that I wanna see it from their point of view. Because a lot of email, we've discussed with a lot of people, and their comfort level at this time, it doesn't seem like it's com- they're comfortable enough with city of Cave Springs. And that's something I wanna bring it on the table. So, you see how, when we're gonna present it, or we're gonna do our planning, how are we gonna provide that, bring their comfort level up?
I, I think, for the sake to go forward with this, that kind of, these, these plans would become central to the city's next five to seven years, obviously. And, you know, really, the last five to seven years before now has been Nacca. You know, that's, that's, you know, that's what has taken to, to get that effort afoot. And so this would be a new one. It would be, the positives to it are that you're able to, obviously, there's, there's a lot of growth pressure, a lot of demand specifically up in that area. And, you know, the city could very well benefit from that in a number of ways, from cost shares to increase of users, you know, all, all, all those sort of things. The downside to it is, you got, you know, you got five to seven years to really work, work towards that. And, you know, you can, you can certainly look at the growth of the city in the last five to seven years and, and see trends, right? You've seen improvements in, certainly your sales tax collection has, has certainly improved, your turnback has improved. But seven years is, you know, twenty thirty, and, and that's beyond twenty thirty. But that's a new census and, and probably, you know, a new, a new step up for the, for the city.
I understand, I'm not, I get it from the city, benefit to the city. I just wanna see it from a point of view of those folks that are really, right now that are Rogers and they wanna come to Cave Springs. I want them to feel comfortable that they wanna come to Cave Springs. I wanna know how, what can we do to bring their comfort level up? I don't feel like it exists right now. And I'm being honest, putting it on the table, so we discuss it. By putting this up, that's the first step, that's a great step, but it's not a step to, financially, we need to be able to do a presentation that shows how we plan on, we can five to seven years, increase those, bring the services, how the sewer lines gonna look, what other lines gonna go, police department is a big concern, I look. Those are all things that we need to be able to answer those questions. And I'm just being honest, putting it on the table for everybody to discuss.
Yeah, if there are ideas or information that will be helpful, let us know, we'll, we'll add this to the, we'll look into it and add it to the presentation.
Yeah, I know the presentation's not over yet, but I, in real time, I'm like gauging the people who I know live in Scissor Tail and so, I mean, but just, it is, just thumbs up, thumbs down, is this making you feel any more comfortable than that? So, we'll follow up and talk about, well, you know, what, what you're wanting to hear and what you're needing to hear. Because, because Justin, I, I, I think that in terms of the land that we are deannexing, I don't, I mean, everybody's gonna miss the best, best clinic, but I, I don't think that you need to sell us much on that. And ob- obviously, from the point of view of like, hey, great, new residents, whatever, that's great for us. But I, I do think the, the majority of what we're hearing and the flowback right now are coming from these residents that would be, I mean, they're, they're future potential residents, right? And so, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm trying, I'm just trying to do as much as I can to.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure we're fighting the right persuasive battle.
And, and, and I think the, the trouble in one of these things is always finding the perspective. Because, because that is certainly an interest. There's a lot of interest involved in here. I, I can tell you, I mean, because I'm, I'm not here to, to tell you to vote one way or the other, I'm trying to give you information. But, I have to tell you, for twenty-one years, this has been the bedeviling problem of Cave Springs. It is why you have a sewer system on a golf course.
Yeah.
Because the only reason you guys took that was to prevent the city from being gone.
Yeah.
And it bridged a gap, and it's been a lot of trouble, and it's going away. But you did that because of this.
Yeah.
Never would have taken that, that, I can tell you right now, you guys never would have taken that, a sewer system had the, the Act seven seven nine not happened. So this has been, this is, really has been the cross that Cave Springs has had to bear for twenty-four years. And it has lost a lot because of that, because with that gap, you have not been able to reconnect and, and serve. And as it stands right now, I, I was frankly pretty surprised, and I didn't quite believe it in February, when the conversation started, because I, because there's, there's so many attempts to try to reconnect, and so, it, it. it, it definitely took me back, but I think it's really the only chance you got.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the part that I think is, it's a, it's a no-brainer for me in terms of that.
So you have that perspective as well, yeah?
I'm just trying to, um, in real time, if we're, if we're talking about bringing six hundred new residents in.
Absolutely.
I, I'm just, I'm trying in real time to, you know, I, I will be their representative as soon as we annexed it. I'm trying to do my best in real time to hear what their concerns are, and um, and again, if, if there's a persuasive battle, I think that's, I think that's the persuasive battle, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it would be like.
Oh, no, it's okay.
I, absolutely, I mean, we know it's good for, we know it's good for Cave Springs, as far as connecting, you know, connected vehicles. However, I really wanna make sure those residents, they, they benefit for them to, they can see why they should come in, and we should have a plan to show them how we're gonna take the sewer in five years or seven years. It's, in some ways, I know it'd be good for Cave Springs, but I wanna make sure we go, and Act seven seven nine really can't take anymore unless you, unless creating island, it's not gonna be able to do that, in my opinion, that's just not gonna happen. However, as far as the golf course goes and sewer hours and city canceled them, and honestly, big part of it was because none of those subdivision could go in, because we couldn't, that land wasn't usable. We had to have that, and the city did really good job at that time to make sure that, you know, that as that improvement, the city paid for that, then gifted to the city, otherwise city couldn't do it. So that was the comfort that we're, we're about to move forward. I wanna make sure we have a plan of action, we have some, that's a great start again. But I really think we need to look at it not only from our point of view, from city of Cave Springs, uh to the new citizens that are coming in, how we're gonna make them feel welcome and comfortable.
Well, and so, yeah, if y'all have uh ideas on other bits of information to gather, but no, send it to me, we'll, we'll add it to this.
One of my, one of my concerns was, uh, where the taxes come from, uh, not assuming property taxes, but I guess, I guess they got here.
Yeah, their taxes are down. Yeah, so uh, we have a slide on that coming up, on, on, on taxes. Um, impact fees, until we take over the utilities, Rogers would continue to collect uh the impact fees. Uh, but when uh, when we do take them over, we'll be collecting the impact fees in that area. There is a provision in that agreement for personal property transfer with regards to water meters, just wanted to make you all aware of. Whatever, you know, five years from now, if uh, uh, if this goes forward, uh, we would have to sort of true up with Rogers on, on, on switching out the water meters and all that sort of stuff. Uh, but the agreement would probably have more of an in-depth, I mean, like, the agreement's gonna change a little bit, I can tell you that right now. Uh, cause we're, a number of eyes are looking at it, and I, I, I wanted some changes, so we, we're, we're gonna do that. I think at the next uh, uh, future discussions we have on this, you'll see a slightly different version, but uh, when, when we get those, I'll share them with you guys. And then we'll have probably more in-depth discussion just about the agreement uh at some point here. Uh, police protection. Shout me if I'm, if I'm wrong on anything, or trying to add, uh, to add anything. I, I'm collecting some thoughts, and you guys tell us what type of information you, you wanna see. Uh, you know, certainly if you wanna see cost or different things like that, we can, we can work on that. Um, but uh, you know, one of the challenges is you will have some more, uh, in, in one way you'll have more, in one way you'll have less, because the area is more centrally located, you won't have some of the farther extents. Uh, but you certainly will have more population um, uh, to, uh, to deal with. Um, on, on the other hand, the area is already uh within a pathway of, of, of where your services have to, have to go. Uh, so it sounds like it's off, off on the tangent, uh, it's, it's in the middle. Uh, there uh has been talk about uh an SRO for Eden Star Elementary School. I wanted to make sure and emphasize that school district boundaries are not affected by any of this, and so there's been uh, that question came up, like when my child changed schools, no, uh, that's an entirely different boundary that is unaffected by annexations. Um, but right now, uh, like Rogers provides an SRO that covers several elementary schools uh, uh, right now, so they share. Uh, Eden Star shares an SRO um with uh, uh, with some other elementary schools in the Bentonville system. Uh, and so Cave Springs would um, uh, would, would be in that position to provide an SRO. Um, I've gone down this road quite a bit, I'm on the school board fable, as you all know, but uh, Tonnie County had uh Rollins um elementary built in its city, and it provides the SRO. Um, typically in those, uh, the way those arrangements work is that the district pays for uh the SRO for the time of the district, for roughly ten months uh that the district is in session, and um, for the other times, uh, the SRO has a different assignment. And the chief would probably be able to uh chime in uh more on that, but that would be in that area of things that we would need to, uh, we need to work out moving forward.
So you said they currently have like a rotating SRO?
My understanding is they have one SRO for three elementaries.
And then chief, would you do?
Here, we met with superintendent Friday, President Lawson and I did, and we talked to her more about this deal, and and we're gonna come up probably at this, the next uh meeting and, and lay a bunch of stuff out there. Um, uh, but they do have um, an SRO that does service that school. Now, does he come there very often? No. Uh, but traffic control, you've got a lot of cars dropping kids off. You've got a lot of co- kids walking to and from school, uh, just from Scissor Tail alone. Um, there's crosswalks there, they need to be protected, children absolutely are number one here. So we're, we're working on this and we'll have something together, uh, kind of like he was saying, you know, uh, we would like to have an officer dedicated, but not be there all the time, um, but be there when he needs to be there, or she needs to be there. Um, but we'll talk more about that.
So you have that coming back?
Yeah, I'm gonna put, we're gonna put a lot of stuff together for you guys.
So there, could there potentially an RSO be there more than currently?
Yes, yes.
I can, okay, I, I, I know you might feel pretty well in that.
You know, um, you know, Justin talks about the Fayetteville School District, I was a school resource officer in the Fayetteville School District for six years. Loved it, I know what they do, I know what they can do, and I know the type of security that they provide just for the, the parents alone to know that there's an officer there or close by there. So I get it, I get where some of these parents are coming from, but um, like I said, we're gonna put something together for you guys and um, and, and talk a little bit more about it, because honestly, I think the amount, uh, well, I'll talk about it later, but.
That is a bit cunning for future meetings.
Yes.
And Rick, I talked to you guys, I mean, we talked about the, the, probably the need for additional officers outside just an SRO.
Correct.
One of the questions I have, and this is a good, a mixed question for Justin and you, you know, um, I know that private schools sometimes also use SROs. I mean, my question was, you know, we have places like Mobius right next door, um, my three K that's opening right over here. I don't know if it's something that like, you know, private institutions could shoulder some of that.
You know, like, like, like Shadow Christian, for instance, they're, they're a private school. Um, they actually employ their own person. Who's an armed security person. Um, I think he's a retired FBI agent, um, that they have, they employ him, he's, he, he's not affiliated with Springdale Police Department at all.
Okay, I was just curious.
So private schools are different.
Okay.
As, as far as like the numbers and everything, we, we've done a lot of work putting stuff together. How many, how many vehicles travel to, you know, the pick-up, the drop-off times? We know exactly how many students walk to and from this, the Scissor Tail subdivision of the school every day. We know how many students there are right now, on average, every day. Um, we've done a lot of research into this, and we, we've got a pretty good plan going as to where we need to be. Um, and, and our numbers are accurate, so when, when it gets time to answer those questions, we'll be ready.
Yeah.
Do, do the school buses still come down pace lane?
I'm, I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
I do know.
Yeah.
I knew they did, because of the other traffic.
Yeah, I, that, that, that's always happened, that's always probably gonna happen, um, traveling down pace lane, but uh, uh, you know, I'm, I'm more concerned, uh, because it is an elementary school that and we all had kids in elementary, or I, I think most of us have had kids in elementary school, and um, you know, I, my wife took my kids to school every day, dropped them off, so I know a lot of parents do that, a lot of parents do that. Uh, so traffic, traffic's gonna be an issue, obviously, because they put a stoplight up there. I mean, it was such a problem for people to get out that they put a stoplight, so we know that's an issue, so.
You gotta remember, it goes beyond just, just the SRO duties at the school. Right now Rogers is supplying a unit in the mornings and in the afternoons to handle traffic control at the school.
Yeah.
Once that area becomes Cave Springs, Rogers is not gonna do that anymore, but it's gonna be on us.
Yeah.
So we, we have, we have something working to present to you guys.
Yeah, so.
I don't know.
Go ahead.
We will go prepared.
All right, I have a question, cause you mentioned the light, and that's a temporary light that they put into them, does that become our responsibility to take on that light?
Uh, only half of the intersection is gonna be ours, just the west side, the, the east side's still Rogers.
So it's half.
So I, I don't know how that's gonna work.
That's a, that's a good question to, are we gonna be responsible, I mean, we're already getting the light here, are we gonna be responsible for another light? Or is that going to be shared between Rogers and?
I, I know for a fact that Rogers, the city of Rogers owns all these equipment, and they put up the light in some ways.
Okay.
Out to the streets superintendent when they do.
And I believe the intention is to put a roundabout there.
Yes.
At some point.
That goes, that goes away with the new.
The.
When the light pass goes through.
Yeah, so the good news is light's already there.
Right.
Tornado when you're, rips it up maybe.
Three lights.
That's right.
But, I mean, that's a good question, are we responsible for half of that? I don't understand, it's their equipment?
Doubtful, they will probably maintain.
Their whole thing?
The whole thing.
I don't think so.
It is temporary, I guess, but for fifty-five years or six or seven years.
I was already just, since we're getting a light ourselves.
When, if, if this does happen and you're driving up one twelve, basically, it'll be Cave Springs on the left side of the road. Rogers still on the right, so that, nothing on the right is changing.
Okay.
I just wanna ask a question for you, what are your plan, you putting together, how many more resources you need? Honestly, I wanna see that we're gonna look at those people in eyes that are coming from Rogers to Cave Springs and say that we're gonna provide you the same service or better service that we sponsor across police department, because we don't own both police.
Yeah, we've already taken steps, we've already met with the folks at Scissor Tail, cause I, I wanted to hear what those folks were saying. Um, and what, what, what the current service they're getting from the Rogers Police Department out there, and we had a nice, great talk with them. And so we've already taken steps to try to figure out what they currently have, and I made it very clear in that meeting and everything, and with everyone I've talked to. I don't want those folks to get any less service than they're currently getting, and I don't want our current citizens to lose any services that they're currently getting by taking these on.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we wanna do it right, and we wanna make sure the new residents, or the new, yeah, the new residents and the old residents are gonna get the exact same service that we're currently providing. So we'll, we'll, we've got something, we'll have something prepared.
Well, and, and just again, the Scissor Tail crowd in the back, you know, if, if there's one thing you can walk out of the meeting, because our, our police force is top notch here in Cave Springs. It's, it's just one thing that I can say across the board, our, our police department is top notch. Um, something that MC and I started talking about is, you know, we're heading into the, the nine PM hour, is, I'm not quite sure how much more presentation there is. We can obviously, you know, go through if you'd like to, we can read it. Uh, MC and I were saying, I, I think this is getting to the point, and just really the nature of this, is that I think that we should consider having a special session next Tuesday where we can really delve into these issues one by one. There are already issues that have come up that we don't have answers to, we know that Rick and Keith are putting something together. Is, is next Tuesday a realistic timeframe for you guys, Rick?
Absolutely.
You know, um, i- i- if we could actually just dig into some of these, these numbers, cause again, um, in terms of, of tying the city back together, I mean, Justin, you convinced me, you know, I, I, I think that is a good thing, but I think what we're all facing is um, concerns from city government employees from different departments like Rick and Keith, um, you know, concerns from residents that we would be bringing in. And some of those things we just need very solid answers to, and I, I, I find myself thinking it would be better to, to come together and pursue those answers in a dedicated space as opposed to trying to do it at nine thirty PM after about three hours of, of, of great fun that Cave Springs sessions always are. Um, so, you know, I mean, that's, I, I, I know we don't have to make an official motion for that, I would like to call for a special session next Tuesday. MC said he would second that.
Meeting, Adam, you don't even have to put it together if that's what y'all want, I'll do the call.
Next Tuesday and, and just regular time, and really.
We'll have to confirm when we get the building, but if, that's the only thing. And if not, I'll check with chief and see if the fire department's available.
Hey, if we do a special session, I don't think the fire department, in my personal opinion, would be the way to go. If, if we do a special session, that means Rogers.
Rogers folks are gonna show up.
At the same time, so I don't know if we would have accurate space, is my only concern, if it would be at the, at the fire hall. Because with the amount of emails that all of us received, I can see a lot more showing up. If Rogers isn't, if Rogers wasn't in session.
We can, we can.
Tomorrow.
We, we can also, I have a lot of chairs out in our storage building, we can also move everything out, put it in the bay if needed.
That's a good idea, actually.
I mean, that would be out of space.
Yeah. You guys have the pancake breakfast stuff. Still, kinda make it a two for.
Should I make them first?
But yeah, just to take back over.
Well, I was gonna say, I can make a suggestion, I can take up the pace a little bit, just so you all can see the remainder, cause there, there's a few more meeting parts I think you might wanna see right now, just so it, it gets your brain going.
Let's do that, like, if you could, uh, I, I think you'd be able to, we'll, we'll, uh, maybe withhold some of our questions till the end or till the next meeting and just use the time to marinate, you know, but, um, but yeah, go ahead, okay?
So, uh, uh, yeah, please, let's move over to, to, to fire. Uh, knowing that we'll have an additional service here for fire, chief, please jump in and correct me on anything I had, but uh, kind of have the same situation, uh, some differences from two thousand seventeen, obviously now we have a full-time fire department, we have a new fire station, and we already talked about mutual aid agreement uh, uh with Rogers. So, uh, that's uh, something that we've talked about. Um, streets are a uh, important factor as well. Um, uh, the, with the annexation, the streets have be- become the responsibility of the city. Um, the city would get franchise fees from third-party utilities that we currently get uh in the uh, uh, with the city. Coincidentally, one of the things we talked about doing this year that we haven't kicked off quite yet is um, updating our franchise agreements, so it would be a good time uh, in that respect too, to u- u- update all our tran- uh, our franchise fee um, uh, agreements. Um, I did want to point out something to you all, uh, looked into, um, getting some more information on, but been told by Rogers that portions of the Scissor Tail roads are private and not, uh, not public roads. So, uh, I'll, I'm, I'm being sent some information uh about what that is, and gonna incorporate that kind of, kind of going forward. Uh, noticed some current work that you guys have been doing with regard to roads and, and drainage projects, there's been a lot going on uh for uh, for Cave Springs. We have a little more roadway data below here too. Okay, taxes, and this one may be one that you all want to chew on, please note where it says estimated on, on here. Um, because there are, uh, this, this is not a, uh, for one thing, nature's sales taxes always for a city, a bit of guess. Um, but uh, but these numbers, uh, we've been uh, pulling together and trying to kind of double and triple check. Um, so things in kind of a, a massage, but just trying to get a picture of, of what that would, uh, what that would look at. Um, the kind of estimated change uh to population is, is on here as well. Um, again, that's, there, there is not a census figure for today uh that we can point to that says as of today, right now, uh, it's official, this is. it's official, this is the exact population. But the method that is generally used is that you look at the number of house tops and apply a factor of, what was it, two point six?
Two point four seven.
Two point four seven. And it gives you sort of a, a, a pretty close range, and so that's, that's what has been done. You have the estimated amount of people leaving, estimated people, amount of people who would be coming in, and what that, what that change would be. Your, your turnbacks are per capita, the turnback are funds that come from the state. The, the state provides a coffers of money that fifteen percent goes to the cities, fifteen percent goes to the counties, the rest goes to the state, it's based off of fuel tax and various other taxes. And all that is called turnback, and that goes on a per capita basis. So if you add population to your city, you're going to get more turnback funds. The street funds are dedicated to streets, just like your, your street funds are on your city budget. General turnback can go to, can go to general fund. But, so you have, you know, the turnback here, here in the middle. Sales tax is also based on population, it's also per capita. We're talking about the county sales tax, Benton County has a sales tax, other portions, you all know this. So, you know, some, some estimations were done there, just based on population change. Up here on the top is property tax. This is the, if you were, most of the property tax is school levy. Cities can levy up to five mils. We do two point.
Six four.
Six four, thank you, two point six four. And mils is what the city levies. The city also gets what's called a county road tax, and that's one point five mils. So that is taken from the assessed valuation. If you look at the parcels and add them up, you can, you can arrive at estimates on what that, what that change would be. So that's something that you all can chew on, see if you have questions, if you want to see it more or different. But this is where we've laid it on so far.
Justin, just to quickly interject, is there a way that we could combine that with what the fire department thought they might need with additional resources, and have this sort of a one pager, so we weren't pulling three things together?
Yeah, I think you could, I think you could kind of start to pull some of that information. And I'm not the financial guru to do that, but I think between, between us, we can figure that out.
Kind of give it out a little bit, yeah, I like that. Jeremy could call out.
I would say the property tax part of it was with assistance from the county.
Yeah.
And they gave us the, based on maps, they figured with each, or what they were collecting from each parcel. We did the same thing on what we're giving, where our side was like fifteen houses and thirty-nine people.
And it wouldn't include that storage problem, that would it?
No, and the storage building is not, it's not, or their assessment does not hit for like two more years.
Right. So this is where kind of maybe the one pager would fit in, where we're pulling some of this stuff together, because it still has some, some blanks here that I'm wanting to work on. But I thought it, you need to reflect the property tax difference, and Cave Springs is two six four, Rogers is three point, three point three.
And that might be good to show, like, you're, what, just an example of a couple houses in Scissor Tales.
Like an average, yeah.
The big thing is entrance rates, but maybe it washes out by the fact of the time tax.
How much will that change though?
Well, if they still have service from a fire station that's close to Rogers with this agreement, it should change.
Eventually.
So we'll, like.
I'll get some chatting on that.
Will, Jeremy will, we're going to put that together here. Okay, some more information, and you may need to pop in on some of this, but did look that the total area in the west would be one point seven, three seven square miles. Sixty percent of it approximately right now is developed, so you're not taking in raw land, which is kind of a different, a different scenario. You want, you want to go from here on a couple of these? We have, we only have a couple left.
Well, just right here, the one point three seven, actually, you're, that's what you're bringing in, which are actually DNx and point six two square miles. So you're, you're looking at a map. Three quarters. Three quarters, I guess, when you're looking at it. So what it always works out to be, your total land mass is going to increase by about ten percent. It's under ten percent from where you are right now, when it gets out. We talked about the division of eight twelve inch, this was passed in the lines, and the sewer basins already, so we skipped through that.
We talked about some of the stuff on the police and fire. I did want to, we did want to point out this, right, the roadway.
Yeah, the total right now in the, in the NX area, there's ten miles of paved roads and one point seven miles of unpaved roads. Keep in mind, when we did those estimates, even those areas that we would be responsible for one half of the road, we included that in the estimate. Also, we're still trying to work out, determine how many of those in Scissor, Scissor Tail are actually private, and that would come off of that, what we would have to maintain.
That's a gated community.
Is this ground all, right?
I'm, I'm told that some are, and I, I've been sent the developer plans. I'm going to figure that out, so I get an accurate, I don't want to say anything that's wrong. So I've just been told that some are, I just don't know which ones are. Okay, and then I think this is the last one right here. A couple of questions, one's been about zoning awards. Property wouldn't need to be rezoned. What we've talked to Rogers about in respect to all properties is that the city's willing to deviate his own to a compatible zone, which they have now, may not fit perfectly, because they're going to have different uses in their zoning districts than we have. But we can get something that's close to, to where the use is, is now. With wards, it'll also have to be assigned, any annexed property has to be assigned to a ward. Right now, I believe Ward One takes up that area, and on, on, on what I, what I looked at. But that, you know, would likely put your wards somewhat out of balance. So maybe something, you know, going forward, we would need to look at. I got a question about fireworks ordinances. I've reminded you that Rogers and the Cave Springs fireworks ordinances, I think we all, we sort of know ours, because we saw it a few times. But the, the, the differences between the two, Rogers has a smaller period of time. However, their mayor or chief can prove outside use. In ours, the city council makes that, makes that determination. So slight, slight differences there. What else?
Is that something you could email to us to look out for next meeting?
For the, the what?
If we're going to have a meeting next week, they just, that's what's law, they make.
No, the, the.
Oh, the, the slide, yeah, I'll, I'll even know that too tomorrow. I've got a couple, I've found a little, a couple corrections I'm going to make, and then I will, I will send that out to you. And you guys send me ideas of, 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 we'll collect them and put them in there, and add, add some of the stuff that we talked about today.
As a council, we can email that, to those that may be asking or not seeing that it's relevant. We'd rather just, then come to the special work section.
But, I mean, I think if you've been asked a question, and think it needs to be, just let me know, I'll be happy to.
But I think your question was, can she?
Oh, sorry.
Once the, once you email the slides, can we provide those to others?
That has, that couldn't be here.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, no, it's a, it's a public document.
Yeah.
Correct. With, with, but it's, it's, there's.
I'm going to put a, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to put a qualification on there, something like watermark or something that says, guys, we're, we're, we're working on this, but, but that's.
Active document, basically.
Send it as a PDF, so it can't be, you know.
I'll do that.
Not a powerpoint, it's going to be modified.
So great, have a list of things here, we'll update as we go, correct something for, for Tuesday. So I'm sorry this took so long, thank you for.
It's okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just want to add something, Chief.
Yes, sure.
I guess we have the second statement of the city in Arkansas, right?
Yes.
So I want to make sure, when I, this statement that I made, I want to make sure the same level of service will continue for new members of the city. Also, you made a very good point, you want to make sure we don't lose it. So whenever you get your calculation of resources, please thank you for.
Oh, absolutely, we're, we're going to shoot for number one again. I may have to go to Greenbrier, Miss property.
I got one more thing. Chief?
Can you send me, we need to have the public data.
Okay. Nevermind then.
Um, I have one question. I was asked by a resident, our citywide cleanup day, are we doing that in the spring?
Yes.
Doing that, and can it be well?
It's on the website. It's on the website.
Oh, I missed it already, sorry.
You did.
Yeah, I missed it. Was it on Facebook?
I've got.
Our website hasn't been up to par, so honestly, I had to check.
I've got to get her the deal, and I should be able to do that this evening.
And Mike, will we answer any questions on this presentation? Just here, or some?
So I'd like to add something before we go. Is that okay, you guys have?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm just, I'm not going to sit there and tell them, go ahead. Add whatever you want, MC. I'm not walking out while you're talking.
No, I just want to make sure that, you know, we go through these meetings, our city is growing. We need to make sure, as the leader, I mean, it's maybe talking about leadership. Part of leadership is creating a team. Part of creating team is that if you make a mistake, you take responsibility for it. And I think that would help this body to improve by the bed by ensuring that leadership is something that's spoken. A statement is made that we go ahead and take that responsibility to help us all get along and do a better job for the city. I really think it's part of the big picture that we're looking to do. We don't need to go through the dissonance, we need to stay professional. And part of that is for your responsibility to build that team and bring that up, and to bring the best in people that are around us. Thank you.
And I do apologize for what I let go to get out of hand, and for the white things were handled. That, that wasn't appropriate. I apologize to everyone.
Same thing, it needs changing.